I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:04 PM. And if we could stand by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could get a roll call, please.
Mr. Steeler?
Here.
Mr. Pascal?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Dion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Annaly?
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan?
Here. And before we get started, if I could just ask for a moment of silence in memory of Lisa Jendron, whose impact to the district and her community will be greatly felt for quite some time. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Peggy O'Shea at this point.
Thank you. Before I start, I do want to mention that Lisa was just an amazing teacher and a wonderful, caring person. And she really believes in our hearts, well, to her family and to all those who feel for us. So, as always, we start with some pictures. And our first picture is from Bandsite, a pre-K classroom. Just before break, our elementary schools have slightly modified Valentine's Day celebrations. And the ground in the picture is holding some homemade slime. Nothing like homemade slime on Valentine's Day. The middle picture, this time of year, we're especially thankful for our building and grounds crew, our custodians and our painters for making sure our parking lots and sidewalks are clear. In this picture, Mike McKissick had just gotten down, done shipping ice from the sidewalk at Avon Lansing and was putting down some salt, so thank you for keeping them safe. And then finally, this year, all three of our elementary schools are collecting bottles and cans for the Clin for Schools Recycling Challenge. And this Saturday, be ready to drop off your bottles and cans at our three elementary schools between 9:00 and 11:00. For every dollar raised, Clin donates an extra 50 cents. So as always, if you have questions or comments, they can be emailed to boecomment@opelis.org. Is someone familiar with this?
It is not.
So, in the short while, Assemblymember McDonald is going to be joining us for a state budget update. But in the meantime, we can start our presentation, and then when he joins us, we'll let him know. Do you want to move to the floor tonight?
I do.
So we'll be moving through the preliminary state aid slides. And we're going to be starting with a presentation by Sylvie Joseph, our instructional technology director on IT. So if we just move through a little bit of that space. Tonight, just saying.
All right, well, thank you Peg and Stacy and everybody. I guess I drew the short straw, so I'll go first. So just a couple of quick points here about IT and our year so far to date. Couple of things I wanted to highlight, our greatest accomplishments this year so far have been the rollout of ClassLink, which is our single sign-on and rostering platform. It's provided our staff and students a single pane of glass through which they can access our various instructional and technology-related platforms. You know, the reading A to Z's, the science programs, the math programs, all web-based that they use. So they have a single place to go and access these applications. And they click on the icon for that platform. It signs them in automatically, there's no need for them to remember passwords or logins and whatnot. That's all part of their district slash Google login. So it gives teachers and students a quick way to access that, those resources, saving some time on instruction. And hopefully, that's been realized and seen at home for those that are virtual. And that's been, I think, huge this year so far. It's been received well. The other piece of that is automated rostering. So adding of students and staff into those platforms typically had been a manual process. And with ClassLink, it's all automated and syncs with our student information system, which is SchoolTool. So it's taken the responsibility, and not complete responsibility, but some of the responsibility away from, you know, the likes of our CIO Katrina Hunt and Mary Rumsey, you know, the superintendent secretary we all love. So it's definitely helped streamline our software and processes. And also, it's helping us as far as analytics go and seeing what the usage looks like for those various platforms. So going forward, it'll help us make better decisions on, you know, where we spend our money, on what sort of platform, what sort of resources. The next point that I wanted to make is our rollout of Parents Square, which was our district and instructional communication platform. This replaced Blackboard Connect, which we had been using in past years for mass communications, phone calls, emails, voice texts, whatnot, to communicate district news to families and parents and staff. Parents Square is a sort of a two-way communication tool. While it does include the phone, text, and voice features, now it gives our staff and administrators a channel for communicating with families and parents at home. And I think it was important this year, especially given the issues with the pandemic and whatnot, that we had a way for parents to reach out because they can't necessarily, you know, come into the school buildings for those conferences and impromptu meetings that may have with faculty and staff. And I know that some of the administrators have spoken highly of it, as well as staff. One of the downsides, I guess, at least what I've been told, is that they're too easily accessible now because of that two-way piece with Parents Square. It's also the same platform that we use for our health attestations and various surveys. We've set up some technology surveys and instructional surveys using Parents Square. I know that a lot of our teachers and staff have used it for parent-teacher conference sign-ups earlier this year when we did that in the fall or winter. And again, just to reiterate that direct parent engagement, especially at the classroom level. You know, this gives us a way to display the student's progress and what that student engagement looks like in a classroom. Kind of like a Facebook for schools, where, you know, the teachers and staff can share pictures and posts about what's going on in the classroom. And parents have that quick, easy, accessible way to see what their kids are learning and doing in class. And then last but not least, probably the thing that most of our staff and students and faculty are excited about is the fact that we were finally able to kick off our one-to-one Chromebook initiative across grades three through five at the elementary level and grade nine at the high school. We didn't get there exactly the way we wanted to this year, again, because of issues with the pandemic and budget woes that we've, you know, fallen upon. But we have started that process, and we're going to continue it, hopefully, and get to a one-to-one state that's perfect for us and will allow us to navigate this new technology normal, I guess. Greatest challenges. I think this whole year overall has been a challenge. Obviously, again, starting with pandemic and everything that that has thrown a wrench into. Funding obviously is a big challenge, you know, when we're trying to, again, navigate this virtual world. Funding obviously leads to the equipment and hardware and software that we need, again, to navigate this digital and virtual world. And so it's tough being able to, or having to tell staff and faculty that, you know, I can't give you what you need because, you know, our funding is depleted or we're running into trouble here or there based on, you know, the lack of smart schools funding that, you know, the state wasn't able to repay in a timely manner. You know, expense-driven aids are being cut or will be shortened in some fashion. So from a technology standpoint, I think the biggest challenge is trying to keep up with the changing technology landscape with limited resources and funding. Next slide. So this table here will give us a small summary or sample size of our device count for students. You know, we're in the neighborhood of 1,800 or so students across the district, give or take. And while these numbers look pretty good on paper, the reality of it is even with going one-to-one in our elementary schools, three through five and ninth grade, the piece that's kind of missing there and is noted there at the bottom is that we have a giant chunk, about 800 devices, almost half of our devices that will be going end-of-life and end of support from Google for, you know, software updates and security patches. It's not the end of the world. The devices still function and work. And it's something that we'll have to collectively make a decision on, whether we continue using those in the coming years. If we can't provide the newer devices that, you know, that we so desperately need, the only risk there is the fact that it is security and operating system updates that we'll be missing out on on those devices. So it could potentially become a risk to data security for staff and students. And that's certainly not something that we want to come across. But overall, you know, we're almost one-to-one at the elementary level. Middle school and high school, a little further away. But I think over the next year or two, with some of the smart schools funding that has come in and, you know, upcoming year's budgets, hopefully, we can fill that gap and completely go one-to-one for our students and then eventually replace staff devices. Next slide, please. So our priorities and anticipated needs for the upcoming school year and beyond. We're going to look to continue our one-to-one initiative for students in grades three through 12, as well as updating our long-range plan and our smart schools' tech plans. Again, you know, due to funding issues with smart schools, we haven't been able to put that smart schools plan into effect, at least not fully. And because it's taken a couple of years to get rolling with that, some of that technology and what we had planned on has changed. So we'll have to go back, not completely to the drawing board, but revise the plans a little bit and update as needed. Some of the key points that we need to focus on our student devices, again, continuing that one-to-one initiative. Staff devices, obviously, is something that has come up in a big way this year, again, due to the pandemic and the fact that we are going virtual. And the hardware that we have simply can't support all of the platforms and the data and everything that we're passing through the internet and our platforms. So, you know, there's priorities involved, but, you know, a couple of things that are necessary are desktops or laptops for staff, including Chromebooks. Part of our smart schools plan was to upgrade the computer labs at the high schools, as well as the middle school. And we may kind of pivot on that because, again, of changing technology and the changing needs, we may end up outputting some of those labs rather than with desktops with some carts, Chromebook carts and whatnot. Although there is still a need for at least one or two labs at the high school based on the classes and programs that are being offered there. Simply, we just can't rely on carts for some of those needs. And again, you know, we're in a space right now with our technology being older and in some cases dying and, you know, having to replace on the fly with whatever we can, you know, band-aiding in some spots. Over the last couple of years, we have replaced our aging projectors with some interactive displays from Dell and Promethean. And I hope to continue that because I think, again, in the current environment, it's going to be helpful to the faculty and staff in providing that the digital and, you know, virtual instruction that they were wired in right now and probably will be for the foreseeable future. So a couple of hardware points that we needed to focus on. Software is a priority, you know, from an instructional and a management standpoint. This is something that, again, goes without saying because of our, you know, current circumstances. And again, it's not just the current circumstances, it's evolving. Technology is always changing and evolving. So, you know, being able to provide the instructional resources, the instructional technology and software and platforms that our staff need or would like to utilize to be more effective, I think, is important. So again, you know, with our long-range plan, with our smart schools' plans, you know, instructional technology and the software platforms that we utilize is something that we'll have to revise and look at and improve upon.
Is that it for the slides?
Questions for Sylvie?
I wanted to start off with just that, you know, we're not necessarily ahead of the curve, but with everything that's happened in the last year, if we had been, you know, further behind in acquiring this technology, we would have not been able to do a lot of the things that we did. You know, whereas we were, I think, managing as a district, we could have been very much limping along this year, and that was not the case. So I wanted to thank you for the work that you've done over the last number of years to get us to the point where this year we were able to navigate all the circumstances that came. You know, not, you know, we're not springing forward lightly on foot, but we are managing, right? And so that's been thanks to the work that you and the team have done over the last number of years.
That's the goal. I would love to sprint forward and get to where we need to be or where we should be.
So Sylvie, sprinting forward, leading into that. I'm wondering if you can talk to us a little bit about, you know, maybe what we've learned about, you know, what's happened this year and our initiative to go one-to-one and our long-range plans. I know that you said that we have a number of devices that will be at end-of-life here. Wondering, you know, if you have a plan in place and you've talked to Stacy about, you know, what we're looking at for next year, possibly?
Yeah, we have talked about that. And we're going to continue with the one-to-one initiative at the high school, hopefully, based on, again, it's going to all come down to our budget and the smart schools' funding that, you know, that we have available to us that will be reimbursed for. Continuing the one-to-one initiative at the high school, you know, we're planning on one grade each year until we're one-to-one at the high school. So next year will be, again, the ninth grade going into the 21, 22 school year. And then we'll continue the same thing at the middle school, hopefully. And I talked to Han Martinelli about that as well. You know, it's hard to say where we'll be next year without knowing the, you know, without knowing where the budget stands and without knowing where our funding from, you know, state aid to smart schools, to all those variables stand. But the goal is to get to that one-to-one state. I mean, this year, hopefully, we're looking to replace some of the staff devices, at least half, with whatever leftover funding that we have. And then next year, replace the rest of those staff devices. And then that can help us band-aid for the next year or so, potentially using those staff devices, the current Chromebooks that they're using, to band-aid and get our seniors through. So hopefully, we can do ninth, 10th, and our 12th grade cohort next year to be completely one-to-one. So again, backfilling those current staff devices and providing those to our seniors for next year. So the goal, again, would be to be almost one-to-one at the high school, unless some, you know, windfall of funding comes through where we can, you know, completely plan for that. But again, I want to avoid getting into the current situation that we're in right now because a lot of the technology that we have was part of, you know, this large capital project, you know, 10, 11 years ago, whenever that occurred. And everything in the district was purchased in, you know, one fell swoop. And that's put us in a bad spot in trying to date and stay on a replacement cycle. You know, with the budget the way it is, with my technology budget anyway, the way it is, there's no way to replace that large amount of technology in one school year. And, you know, the amount that we've been able to replace each year, it's been minimal. So by the time we get some of those devices updated, then the ones that we had just recently updated, you know, are end-of-life or out of support or whatever the case is. So, I mean, it's a battle, an ongoing battle. But I think, you know, with some of the steps that we've taken, updating the plans and hopefully, hoping for the best in terms of funding will be where we want to be.
So one of the things that you have mentioned are the staff devices. And this is something, you know, that we're hearing from staff as far as like their expectation to be able to participate in virtual events and their ability to be able to communicate with their students without having access to a microphone or a webcam or something like that. Are we done purchasing for this school year? Do we feel like we've provided enough of those, like, peripheral things? Where it's a low-ticket item where we might be able to solve some problems fairly quickly? Understood?
We're certainly not, no. No, we're certainly not done with the purchasing. And I've been looking at various devices, microphones and such that can help us, like you said, limp along and get through the year. Like you said, the webcams and mics. And some of the problem is that the devices that we connect them to, not necessarily the Chromebooks, but the desktops in the classrooms, especially at the secondary level where we're trying to do synchronous learning, desktops and the hardware is just so old that even the microphones and webcams just won't function properly just because they can't handle it. You know, we've had teachers and staff, and I've seen it myself, where you take a brand-new webcam, you know, whether it's a $50 webcam or a $200 webcam, you plug it into the old desktop that's in the classroom, and it just, it will not connect. It won't show the image or the picture. You might get some audio here and there, you know, and it's just, it's not, it's not working for them. There are folks that, you know, some a little more tech savvy that have made it work, but it's not something that's, you know, easy enough for your, you know, average staff member or whatever to get through and make it so that their instruction is effective.
So do you know the percentage?
Are we done with the purchasing? I'm looking to get some purchasing done over the next couple of weeks so that we can address some of those microphone issues and whatnot.
Do we know the percentage of our staff who are working on those antiquated desktops? I know you said it's primarily secondary, I'm just curious. Because we also talked about, you know, having Chromebooks available for our staff to use, which are compatible with some webcams and mics and things like that.
Yep. It's a, those that are able to work effectively is a lower percentage. You know, when we were doing the budget plan for next year with the Budget Committee, I had gone through, I don't have the numbers offhand here, but we had gone through the number of devices in classrooms that needed to be replaced. And it was, it was a good portion of it. I want to say at least half, if not slightly more than that. So again, you know, we've been band-aiding where we can. And it's not something that I have an easy or quick solution for. The peripherals are a different story. It's something that, you know, we can muddle through and purchase where we need to. But to buy a desktop or, you know, or a Promethean or some sort of display, it's just something that we don't have the funding or the cash flow for right now.
And then I guess my last question, which may involve Peg too, is, you know, we're talking through 12. What is the accessibility to our K2 students? And, you know, is there accessibility within the buildings? Maybe not one, but for them to be able to have access. I know that we've sent some devices home for some of our fully virtual kiddos. I'm just wondering where we are with access for our younger grades?
I think we're, I think we'll be right there. Again, right now, we are one-to-one, three through five. And so what that's done with this year's one-to-one initiative in those grades is open up the existing carts that we have, excuse me, to allow usage at the K1, 2 level. Now, again, the earlier slide indicated that we have a number of devices that are going to be end-of-life as of next year. So, I mean, for next year, we're okay, but it's still something that we'll have to plan for replacing. And we do have plans on replacing those carts. So that, we might not necessarily be one-to-one unless it's a decision that we make, you know, collectively. But there's definitely availability of devices for the K1, 2.
So their current access would be, you know, basically, the process would be to sign out a cart and then you would be able to have that available to your students?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy or you, Sylvie, but we got our first, I believe, first reimbursement from the State School Smart Schools Bond Act. And that was a small portion. Is the plan, as we get those reimbursements, to funnel them back in to more purchases? Or, you know, I don't know what, because I believe we still have more funds in the Smart Schools bond than we could, you know, request, right? Like, we have to pay it, but it seems like at this rate, we're getting, you know, two, three years later, we're getting those payments. So it's tough in the meantime.
So we did have some good news, which is why Sylvie and I had a conversation to open up purchasing for this year for the equipment. So there's about $73,000 available for equipment. And we discussed the teacher devices are the top priorities. That's what we're looking for this school year. We did receive the first smart school bond payment, a little bit over $100,000 that Chromebooks are going end-of-life next year. So we finally received reimbursement for those. Now I can submit the claim for the cameras. So once we get the funding for the cameras, then we're going to look to update the long-range technology plan, revisit three through 12, see if we want to modify that. And also, we would have to have another hearing for the smart schools to modify that plan as well. There's lots of money available for the smart schools. It's just the funding seems to take a bit long.
Well, and I think putting all of our eggs in one basket there is risky, too. I mean, I've been involved in some one-to-one. And really, my questions are, you know, it's great to get devices in kids' hands, and that's what we want to happen. But somebody needs to be able to effectively deliver that instruction. If we don't have the infrastructure inside to give it to our educators, then what's the use of the kids having a device in the first place? So for them to not have a microphone or not have a camera and to be able to interact with their kids or get that engagement that we're asking for, you know, my concern is to make sure, you know, whatever we can do to get our educators set so that they can then effectively deliver it out. You know, obviously, we'd love to see a one-to-one for every kid. And, you know, purchasing a bulk like that is scary because they all come up kind of like around the same time. So unless we have, like, a cyclical plan to replace and, you know, and it doesn't, it never ends. Just because we have a third grade or Chromebook, that doesn't mean they're going to have it until they're in 12th grade. Like, there has to be a replacement plan for those types of things. So I know, and I'm, yeah, I'm sure that there's a bigger picture kind of thing. This is just like one of the things that's my wheelhouse type of thing, and I have some experience. And so my questions are based on, you know, kind of, I love to see the plan and that we're moving forward, but I'm also concerned that our internal infrastructure is not like where it needs to be in order to provide the instruction to the kids that we've worked so hard to get devices into their hands. So just very briefly, and then we're going to switch to John McDonald, I think he's here. But just so you know, the, so the tech-
But just, just so you know, the um, so the tech plan, our tech plan is June, June. I know Stacy mentioned the next little, but we're going to be working on our tech plan and having our first committee meeting in March. And I know that involves some of you later March. And at the budget committee meetings, we did prioritize staff devices and talked about needing for staff devices. And we're fortunate that we're going to be able to meet half of that immediately this year, so.
Great.
Okay. And then.
I'm sorry, I I mean, I'm a
I just, can we move to Mr. McDonald?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a quick no, but that's Rental, conceptually, rental agreements have come up before as a way to stay current. But I'm assuming that's not a viable option, whereby you rent computers and then you would build in replacements. But is that just not a thing?
And what are your thoughts on renting devices, Sylvie?
The leasing actions for BOSI is a rather
You usually don't end up saving.
Yeah, that's my, I I think
I mean, that's essentially what the BOSI's purchasing model is. You're essentially, I mean, th- they own the devices and and they rent it to us. I mean, we're not saving anything, there's there's no savings in cost to the devices itself. I mean, a true rental, like, you know, going to, you know, Blockbuster, for lack of
Take yourself.
You know, that, just, I I don't know if that truly exists. Again, you know, the BOSI's model is
You know, in three years, you gotta, you gotta keep up. All right, enough of that. Thank you.
I don't know if a true rental model exists.
Other things, um, we've done it for the network upgrades, things like that. Not for devices.
And just like as, and it forces your hand, I mean, you have to stay current.
Right.
So, um, someone member McDonald is with us. So uh we would like to uh welcome John McDonald to our meeting to provide a a state budget update. And as soon as we see you on the screen, we're all waiting.
You are currently muted there, John.
I am unmuted now, right?
That is correct, perfect, we can hear you, welcome.
Thanks, Matt, and and Peggy, Stacy, and all the board members and staff and members of the public. It's, it's, I guess it's good to be with, it's not good that we're not in person like we've been the last couple of years. But it's good to be subject to to kind of give you an idea of what's going on in Albany. And there sure is hecking a lot going on in Albany. Every time you turn around, something new is going on. And every once in a while, it actually involves the public work, so that's even much of the business. State budgets out there, I've been meeting with different school districts and advising them to sit tight, for lack of a better term. The executive has proposed a lot of the things we normally don't like in the budget, including consolidation of all the expanse-based aids, which will eventually lead to a decrease in funding to the district because it goes in a black grant format. One of the things, the co-host has always been, I mean, Stacy's been, over the years, I've heard it called me many times, about they wanted to basically extinguish the prior year's expenses, which is a significant amount of money. And that is the most, I don't think that would recall seeing that in the budget. That was kind of like a real slap this year in regards to just just extinguishing what you owe. The reality is the district, the Education Department, there's no problem going back to money when you've been overpaid. But they're a little bit slow when you're underpaid. And um it adds up to a lot of money over a period of time. Regards to the bottom-minded aid, that's to be determined. There's a mind, you know, obviously, there's a proposed increase of three percent aid, but that's supposed to, that is federal dollars. There's, if anything, right now, with the way our budget's proposed, the state dollars, there's a reduction of about eight-hundred million dollars statewide. So we know we need to do that. We also are waiting on Washington DC, we're waiting on the federal government. That's been the whole process. President Biden was down running and they spent two or three weeks dealing with an impeachment trial instead. And that has kind of delayed things moving forward. Allegedly, in the next two weeks, we will be getting an idea of exactly how much money is coming to State New York. We're getting a good sense that it may not be what the governor is hoping for, which is fifteen billion dollars, so it's twelve point three. That's going to help us quickly take another longer view of the budget. And it'll be looked at in regards to where we can include in areas like education, which is over the priority. But it'll also be an opportunity to kind of do some multi-year planning. The reality is this infusion of funds that the federal government is finally going to be giving, which I remember Congressman Taco was talking about this back in May of last year, but is going to be at one time or another. It's not going to be recurring. And, you know, you guys all know about recurring revenues or a lot thereof. And so we have to be very careful with how we spend it. Because we're not really sure, well, there's different predictions of when the economy will fully rebound. Many people are talking about a full rebound in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-five. So we need to be mindful of that. We don't want to, I mean, I I should say this, I should start off at the beginning. To the board and to the administration, you've done more than a moment's work trying to get through the process. I know that both Peggy and Stacy had had many lengthy conversations back in July of last year, trying to figure out where do we go and how do we? And we really came to this conclusion that we got to take it on a quarter-by-quarter basis and see what happens. By now, and somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, you should have received all but five percent of your aid, is that correct? Right, Stacy? Did you actually, has the money hit the bank?
They received our excess cost aid, our BOSI's aid that was withheld uh late summer, early fall. So we have received both of those payments, yes.
So, I mean, it it appears that, although I know the district took a lot of difficult choices, that was responsible for, hey, you guys did the right thing, not knowing what the certainty would be. Um, it it appears that at least this fiscal, we've gotten through the worst. I I like to think that, that's a fair point. But be careful, you know, we've got a long way to go. We're hoping to bring more revenue. You know, there's a variety of different revenue impulses out there. There's actually a six-foot agenda that proposes to raise an additional fifty billion dollars a year. Now, I would not get your hopes up on that only because our overall operating budget is a hundred billion dollars a year. And it's hard to believe that we're just going to add fifty billion dollars and not think it's going to have a deleterious impact on on people, because people who are mobile, we know. We're seeing that now as people are, New York residents are living in Florida, working because they can. So we've got a long way to go, we are going to get looking. I know I'm supporting a few of the revenue enhancers that mostly are are the ones that don't impact the middle class, don't come back services to those who need. Yeah, same folks have an impact of maybe five to seven billion dollars in the year. Don't really hurt people who can have the ability to pay for it. But we need to be very thoughtful about it because, as you know, with anything in life, every action has a reaction. I do want, that's more of the financial perspective than I'll open up the questions in a second. I also just wanted to make sure that, and there's been a lot of energy in the last twenty-four hours. I was alerted to a fact that there was a depository saying here for the order that the government proposed that required teachers, only teachers, nobody else, to have to provide upon the request of the district, if they had the vaccine in. And I I just, to be honest with you, I don't support that. And if people, first of all, should feel pressured to get the vaccine, we encourage people to get the vaccine. If you can get it, that's a whole other discussion. But fortunately, I actually, I called the governor's office last night and said, you guys are kind of ignoring hip hop. And not just because of me, but because of many other entities, that provision is going to be drawn, which is, I think, important. Because, you know, the teachers, which sit down lessons at all. And quite frankly, I think it's invasion of privacy. There's other ways to make sure they have a safe environment for people to operate in. And the other thing that's really kind of interesting is, um, I think the Education Department overall has been appropriate in requesting, in regards to testing, you know, we kind of pick you off because the reality is, particularly for our children, this last year has been anything but normal. It's been very difficult. You guys have pivoted and responded in the most responsible way possible, the resources But we know those guys, we know those generals. And to be able to put that pressure on students and and the administration, I just think it's problematic. However, the new Education Department seems otherwise, so we're going to have to work through that process. And that will be a source of discussion within its function along with everything that's So I'm better with questions and answers than you with just talking to a screen. So at that time, I'll hopefully look for the person to answer.
I have a couple of questions, this is Stacy, I think, for you, John, is that okay?
Go ahead, Stacy.
Okay. Um, I just was wondering, foundation aid is frozen for the second consecutive year in the proposal. And then, as you had mentioned, the this, the creation of the new services aid, really consolidating, reducing the multiple expense-driven aid categories. Do you think there's likely going to be change in either one of those items in there?
Our our goal, we would take a change in the foundation, that's the really, that's the strip some of the That's where we want to focus in the revenues, and we are able to free up. And I think that's the only, we're seeing, maybe that's just
Also, I'm not sure if you have any insight on this or not, but for the first time included in the state aid runs, the the STAR uh aid was included in the state aid runs. And historically, uh, we have treated that as a a revenue for the tax levy. Because as you're aware, it's a basically a discount, the state subsidizes the share of the residence tax bill. So it's, it's truly making our levy whole. Do you know why that was introduced on the runs?
Well, I I I think it's because the governor has a proposal. Miss Stacy, you know, I might, no, actually, Stacy, you probably understand more than I do. I know everybody else, no disrespect, uh, how bright you are, it's going to be challenging. But basically, this is more of a, a accounting proposal. The governor likes to talk about the fact that he has a spending cap, a self-imposed spending cap of one-two percent. And the reality is, STAR, the money for STAR, which the district receives, is actually money that we have to spend. Whereas if it's the form of a rebate check, it's it's looked at as an expense. So it's a, basically, it's a revenue and expense discussion. This is part of an effort that the governor through the Tax and Finance Department has been working on slowly but surely over the past several years. And, you know, part of it was to actually cut down on people who were taking multiple Star payments. So you can't, we all support that, like, that's, you're not wrong with that. And basically, what happens is instead of getting your tax bill July first, which shows you that you have a STAR credit right there, so in other words, the bill's five thousand, but you get five hundred off, so you're not paying twenty-five hundred, which to me shows you that, wow, this is working. Instead, you pay five thousand, but, and it's actually worked out this way for some people, just right down outside of an income threshold, you actually get the STAR check before you have to pay the school tax bill. So it's getting a check versus getting it taken off your bill. And I have to be honest with you, the first, what what they've done is they focused primarily on people who are making more of a, over a quarter of a million dollars a year. First of all, it was a half million, then it went to quarter of nine. This year, he's proposing to put it into everybody, which is causing some angst with the assessors and myself because we know that many seniors would have to participate in this. And we just want to, um, legislation to basically allow assessors to roll everything over so seniors don't need to walk into the city and want to get for anything. And now we're talking about having them apply for the program, it doesn't make sense. So that's to be continued, Stacy, but I think that's the long explanation of why you're seeing that in here.
Um, I wanted to share good news we received today. I don't know if you're aware, but um probably two months ago, Auburn County had advised us that they were going to be able to provide voting machines to the district. Uh, but we did receive notification today that they will be able to provide a voting machine, so that was good news.
That is good news because I had prodded the commissioner on the Board of Elections about that and said, this is not a good idea, right now, with everything else going on. And it's interesting because I was just talking to Nina Murphy, she was one of the people I was talking to a while, Nina Murphy's, the BOSI superintendent. I was talking about the voting machines overall, and she goes, no, 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 we're buying machines, don't do that yet. Don't do that yet, you know? It 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 it, the irony is, you know who ends up, you know who ends up, you know, at the end of the day, it's the state who will. Because we're just redundant, we're, you know, you guys are getting machines through BOSI's, it would be minimal cost. Now, granted, last year, you incurred a large expense by doing the mail-out. Everyone incurred a large expense with the mail-out ballots. But it it just doesn't make sense. And quite honestly, in this day and age, little things like that, which would have led to the company, you know, eight thousand dollars a machine, you probably had to get at least four or five machines. You know, there's forty thousand dollars out the door, if you multiply it by all the different districts throughout State New York, it's kind of like, why are we doing this to ourselves? And you wonder why the State of New York has such a high cost to live in. So I am glad that finally that information can convey to you. It's something that we were waiting on the county to share. And um this is why when folks like Peggy and the other superintendents join us for these, we we, as Peggy Payton knows, we actually meet quite regularly with the superintendents. These type of issues come up, and we're able to take it back and and explain that even though it's a county decision.
So thank you for your efforts there, that was win for us, we'll take it.
Take away, there hasn't been too many the last couple of years.
And then, um, last question, it's kind of two-pronged. Um, I just want to make sure that I have the most up-to-the-information. So there's really, in the executive proposal, there's two stimulus assumptions. One was approved in December, um, and we were going to have to apply for that, much like the CARES Act. It's the GEAR Two and the ASTER Two. And then the second piece is um the stimulus that has yet to be approved. I believe in the executive proposal, it was an assumption of six billion?
Hold on one second. It's supposed to be on a trade meeting, so just, I'm gonna hold on, repeat that. Repeat the second part of that question again, please.
So the second part is, in the executive proposal, um, it's my understanding that the governor assumed a six-billion-dollar federal stimulus that has not yet been approved, but is is close to being approved, is my understanding?
That's, that's what we're hearing, but, you know, unfortunately, I come from the school, so I see it, I believe it. But yes.
Or any additional question?
I don't have any questions, but I, you know, I just had a comment. John, I I just, uh, looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two preliminary proposals, it is kind of an optical illusion, I think, if you're looking at it. And I think it's important for people to understand, like, with the consolidation of the expense-based aids, having the STAR on there, like, it makes it look like, and and having the federal stimulus included in that assumption makes it look like you're, you're being made whole. But really, also, when you're looking at the the val- the um, the amounts that are projected for high-needs districts versus low-needs districts, it seems to be an imbalance and per- and 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 equity there. So, and I know this is something that you've advocated before, and, you know, we're your homegrown district and that you'll continue to advocate for us. But it just is, it's difficult to look at and and to know we're constantly playing catch-up to uh some of the bigger districts.
Yeah, I I don't disagree with you. I I, you know, usually, I come up with the, you know, this is a starting point, it's only going to get better. This year, it's a mirage. It it's almost as if you want to just throw it out and wait till we get to a point where we really know what we're going to be working with. Because it, there's just a lot of, a lot of unknowns that we're still trying to work through. But I do think it's going to be better at the end of the day.
I'll take it. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to take a quick moment, John. I know you know this, but thanks for doing the constituent survey you do, because it also, you know, you could see that everyone, all your constituents feel that, you know, K-1 of education is such a priority, right? Like, if you look at the graph that you've got, it's such an important for everyone. And, you know, it's just, you know, and I appreciate the time that you guys put into coming to these meetings and all the work that you do. But, you know, we're also having conversations around, can we get the machines, the computers and things that people need? Or whether it's that or funding for just to keep our teachers or our librarians. And I know you know how important it is, but, you know, it's clear that the constituents feel it's important. And, you know, we're still, at the end of the day here, we're struggling in a lot of areas. So it's very challenging.
Yeah, well, I agree. And, you know, that survey is actually, as you might guess, pretty diverse in what it's asking. And therefore, it's actually good because the responses represent the diversity of ages and patterns and the concept of community and community education. Let's all speak our own.
So if there are any areas where, you know, like, we were talking about the Smart Schools Bond Act, where we just got reimbursed for monies we spent, I don't know, three, four, or five years ago?
It's nearly, finally, only because of the fact that, I don't want to get into this too far, but, you know, obviously, the digital vibe is more than just a miscreant reality. And it's not just something that you drop in, you drop the cell phone, it's more than that. And the only good thing is, what's been frustrating even about the Smart Schools Bond Act is that it's painfully slow getting to the end of it. It's starting to pick up. And it turns to find out whenever there's problems going on, the governor puts out announcements, say, put out a major announcement, listed all the different bond acts that were awarded today. So I guess the good news is, is that because of everything with COVID-related, people are starting to realize that this technology gone there, let's use it, let's move these applications through in a much quicker fashion. Because, you know, I was listening to the first part of the presentation, and, you know, the risk runs sometimes is that some of the stuff is going to be outdated by the time the money gets here. And that just does not make sense.
And I just know, just letting on Stacy's behalf, it's been so difficult from a cash flow standpoint. So anything we can do to reduce the, you know, number of years we get between payments would be ideal.
Right there, we're talking about years versus weeks.
Thank you, John.
Part of that, unfortunately, is because of the fact that the education department is independent from the government's control. And therefore, a position of budget control is the case, the department is not controlling the funding, it's controlling the positions. I'm sure Stacy and Peggy will tell you, there's many times you call the education department for a question and it takes days, weeks. This will be four quarters anyway, to get somebody to answer it, because those positions are usually not filled. It's a very, it's a big sore point with me, because at the end, we don't have any budget numbers for these positions, because we think they're necessary. And at the end of the day, we want services. And that's a challenge. And calling the education department, asking what things are out, they start off, we don't have enough staff, we can never fund them.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for joining us, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you at some point in the near future, very soon.
I will, I'm sure will. Thank you very much, and thanks to everybody for your great work and patience and your most difficult things.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now Stacy is going to talk about.
Yeah, we have a great thought day on revenues, because it's fresh right now, we just didn't talk about it. So no need to really touch on this, because John already addressed all these items during his update of the state budget process, so we can move on to the next slide. So this has not been updated since the last time we met. It's the same exact slide, just for folks that haven't been with us. I just wanted to revisit this. So this is our preliminary revenue summary. And really, the talking points are here. The state aid, the first three lines, the state aid, building aid, federal aid, you'll see the negative, the large negative figure in the state aid, and that is due to the combined expense-driven aids and the reduction there, as well as the adjustment. And then you'll see the federal aid category, there's a large increase, and that is the stimulus monies, the CER SSA stimulus monies that we have to apply for. So this is based off of the executive proposal. There's an asterisk next to preliminary, because these numbers will change once the state budget is approved. The next big talking point, you see the arrow next to the pilots. So in the 21-22 school year, the Brookfield, it has had a pilot agreement historically. This is the last year, the current era that we're in now, so Brookfield will be moving on to the tax role. So you'll see a large increase in property taxes, and it's offset against pilots. So Brookfield is ending their pilot agreement, and they will be added to the tax role, they'll be sharing in the burden of the tax levy. And I'll talk about the property tax gap in more detail a little bit later. And the next big talking point on revenues is really the inter-fund revenue and our fund balance. So in the current year, we are exhausting the ERS and the TRS reserves. And in the proposed in the proposed budget, we would only use EBLAR, and that is to fund our retirements, which is appropriate. No planned use of fund balance. So we've talked about this time and time again. Historically, we've balanced our budget using reserves and fund balance, and we're moving away from that model that is not a sustainable model. And we're certainly not in a financial position to continue that practice. So based off of the preliminary revenue numbers, you'll note that total revenue is $42.6 million. So that would be, that would mean that we would have to make at least $1.2 million in adjustments based off of last year. So we don't have the expense side of the house finalized yet, so we can't talk about a budget gap just yet. We've had four free return on investment sessions, we have our fourth this Friday. We're gonna focus on extracurricular activities and athletics during that discussion. And then the following week will meet, excuse me, the following week will meet, and we'll review all of our items that are categorized as a number two. We'll scrub those, so then we'll have a line in the budget that we'll be able to prepare and send to the board. Any questions on that slide?
So our two years is up.
Two years.
Every year, two years. Time's up. Thank you.
Tax cap calculation. So the tax cap calculation is $17.1 million. This is a multi, this is a 15-step calculation. There's a lot of factors that are involved. I call this preliminary until March 1st, when it actually has to be submitted to the office of state comptroller, because technically, that tax base growth factor number can change up to the date of three months. So not likely, but it could. So the tax base growth factor for COGS that is unique to the district is 1.0032. Basically, it's a change in your tax role over the prior year, and that is published by the Department of Taxation and Finance. Again, the big talking point with the tax cap calculation is the Brookfield pilots. So pilots are included in the calculation. Obviously, if you're using revenue, you're no longer going to have that. The revenue from the pilot, then it is added to the assessment role, and then that property owner, the shares and the burden of the overall levy. So we'll talk about the tax rate in the next slide, but that's the biggest takeaway I'm gonna ask out.
So can I ask, did we have, did you guys meet with the city to discuss if there's anything that we don't know about, that we aren't aware about, which may impact any of these calculations?
So we had communication with the city. We didn't actually have a virtual meeting, but some phone calls and then exchange of people, so having information.
Okay.
Can you just go back to the comments, sorry. ERS and TRS are not exclusions for the current year, they have to grow by at least 2%, and that's not the case. The allowable levy growth factor, that's historically the misconception of the 2% tax cap. It's the lesser CPI or 2%, and so it is less than 2%. But that's just one piece in a multi-step process, and that is 1.23%. And then there is the capital exclusion component, which is $160,000. So that is the local share. It's the difference between our bonds, our scheduled bond payments, and the building aid. So that's what that piece is. Okay, I'm sorry, thanks. All right, so the proposed tax levy is the $17,106,788. That will require a simple majority vote. We're not looking to go over the tax cap unless we want to have that discussion, but so I assume we do not. So that will require the simple majority vote of just 50% plus one. And the proposed levy is a 6.8% increase, but again, with Brookfield shifting to the assessment role, the assessment is gonna grow by, our estimate is 5.84%. So the majority of that is the shift in that revenue source. I included three years of tax rate and levy information here. You'll see between 1819 and 1920, so the tax rate, this is actuals. The tax rate in 1819 was 36.47, so that's on each $1,000 assessed value. It grew by 54 cents in 1920 to the 37.01. And then it grew by 56 cents in the current year to 37.57. And our estimation based off of our conversations with the city is 37.91. So that's a 34 cents increase, it's less than 1% increase on the tax rate. So what does that mean? That means for the homeowner of a home property with assessed value of $150,000, it would be over $2 a month and about $26 per year. So it's very reasonable. So the 6.8% looks a little scary, but it's right in line where we've been. It's really just that shift for Brookfield. That's the main contributor to that.
So can I ask, just for the benefit of those maybe logged in at home, if you could explain what Brookfield is and what pilot is? Just because it does seem to have a very large impact on this budget. I don't know, it might be helpful for people to know.
So a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, and so it goes through a process with a committee that has to be approved. It's usually a 10- or a 20-year arrangement. For Brookfield, it's based off of, there's a set schedule. I believe it was a 10-year arrangement. And so instead of the property owner paying taxes, they pay this agreed-upon amount. The city would bill the property owner for the pilot amount. There's a share that goes to the city, the county, and school district. And once the city fills, the property owner, the property owner would pay the city, and then the city would then pay us. So it's just a different funding mechanism as far as the school is involved. So now, with Brookfield coming up with that scheduled pilot agreement, the property will go on to the tax role, and then we will bill them through our billing process, and then we will collect through the tax collection process. I think that's it for me. Are there any questions for me? I'm fining on the revenue, so. So I will submit on March 1st the calculation. And I will let them know that we do not intend on press super authority or exceeding the calculation, because part of that's sufficient. I think we can move on to the buildings and grounds.
Hello, everybody. How's it going tonight?
Hi, John.
Okay.
Stapleton, our facilities director.
So I don't normally talk about reopening the buildings on February 24th, but really can't let this one go with the effort that was put into getting the buildings open for school this year. So the amount of equipment that was moved and installed, and I don't know if the crew has fully recovered from the amount of furniture that was removed from the classrooms. And I know it's weighing on them, the thought that they're gonna have to put it all back. But this was above and beyond, and I thank them for the effort that they put into it. It was quite a task. And ironically, the thing I probably get the most flack for is the fact that they have to do paperwork every night, which that's reopening our buildings was really our greatest accomplishment this year. And I think keeping them open definitely isn't just because of the effort that they're putting in. That's more of like, everybody's putting in the effort on that one, but we're definitely doing our part. So that's that. Our greatest challenges. Well, congratulations. I know you've mentioned this in past meetings, but congratulations, Paula, and Kevin Langley, and Dan Warlands. You finally were able to retire, so I hope you enjoy it. We had two resignations, Booker and Melanie, all sorely missed, great workers. So staffing is a problem, definitely a big challenge right now, having a hard time filling the positions. Some of that was because of the budget that we were under. It was, froze it a little bit, tried to make some gains. And the other part is, there's just not a lot of people applying right now. So we're still dealing with all that. Yes, so. The building summary, that hasn't changed much. You can go to the next slide. You can find also this information on the website. We could talk about it more. I think this slide was created to discuss a need that we're working on, so I don't want to go too deep into it. There's a couple staffing issues, and we thought it was gonna be behind us, but it's not. So I'm going to, I'm gonna move on from the building summary. I mean, the information really has not changed much from the last presentation. So our priorities and anticipated needs, we're trying to fill the vacancies. Got two custodian, day custodian positions. That's in progress. That's as far as we can go with that. May have some subtle stuff to talk about. Continuing the work with CSARCH on the five-year plan and the building condition survey. This is our building condition survey year, so it will be completed. I think we're gonna try to put it off to the next budget, but we can start that and finish that whenever we need to. In addition to that, we also need to do our lead-in water testing, and they rolled out a new gender-neutral sign that needs to be put on all the single-use occupancy bathrooms. So that needs to happen quickly. There's deadlines for that. That's gonna bump the building condition survey. Got some equipment needs in there, more of a budgetary concern, I think for Stacy, but hopefully, they stay in our budget. We're gonna pick up some side-by-side buffers, some scrubbers. The dumpster, I believe that's Advanced Skyc, is falling apart. And with having to do the mulching and snow removal with limited crew, especially mulching with one groundskeeper. Trying to get some new equipment, the front loader should help with that a lot. And utility box is, I think, a safety concern. Carrying your tools in the cab or truck and not where they belong in the utility box, so. Small crew, the groundskeeper, like I said, three maintenance mechanics, head custodian. Russ Christie moved furniture in every building, I believe, so special thanks to him. There's me, I believe there's about 23 custodians and cleaners. There's me. I believe there's about 23 custodians and cleaners and then a few, uh, sub-cleaners that we, uh, are grateful to have. So when you see them, thank them. They, they're working very hard. So that's it for me. I'll let, let you move on.
But there might be some questions. I don't know, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
No questions.
Yes, I appreciate the work that you guys have put in this year. And certainly investment for us to be able to have stayed open as long as, as much as we have throughout the school year. And, you know, your custodians and cleaners are certainly frontline and making sure that that happens. So our greatest appreciation to, uh, your team.
Thank you. We're definitely doing their part.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and now we have Erin Hill, our Director of Special Programs, and Karen Renesi, our Assistant Director, to share their presentation with us.
Thank you. And I would like to express my thanks to Jim Stapleton, because I will buy back some of his time, because we do have a few more than four slides. We hope to give you an, an exciting and thought-provoking presentation. And, um, we look forward to your questions at the end. Um, this, serving 432 co-host students, I will tell you that we finalized these slides yesterday. And, um, today we had one more, um, elementary school student and two high school age students, they's out of district, who moved in, who finished their registration process today. So, um, asterisk by that 432, because I feel like we're kind of like, when I was growing up and McDonald's had the sign outside their, their restaurant that said, this many people served, and they had the different little squares so they could keep filling it in and, and changing the number. Um, that's how things work for us. So even with yesterday's numbers, um, the numbers that we give to you today are not going to be completely accurate. And that's sort of the environment that we work in all the time. Um, so Heidi Clemente and Deana Dupuy are the people who work with us in the office. We're a four-person department, and that is just kind of a generalization of how we typically spend our time. Next slide. So when we talk about special, special education, we speak in a lot of acronyms. And the two most, actually three most important ones are the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, um, a free, appropriate public education, and the least restrictive environment. So our important work as the Committee on Special Education is to place each student in a programmatically appropriate, least restricted environment. So where they're learning is as close as possible to their typical peers while meeting their needs. So the general education classroom, then a self-contained classroom for part or all of the day in their own school. Then a district-wide classroom for a particular group of high needs, being placed outside the district in a public school, like a neighboring school that has a specific program or a BOSI. And finally, a private-approved special ed school, serving kids regionally with similar needs. Next slide, please.
So we thought we'd start, uh, talking about our students by talking about our littlest learners, um, who are our preschoolers. Um, we are responsible for educating our co-host students aged 3 to 21. Um, currently, we have 23-year-olds and 31, 4-year-olds under CPSA. And there's, um, the two bar graphs show the services that the two, um, groups get. So for our 3-year-olds, we have, um, 10 related services only. So that's speech, OTPT, or a combination of those. Um, we have four in integrated programs, which is a special classroom, which has a mix of, uh, students with special needs and their typical peers. And we have six 3-year-olds in self-contained programs, which is, um, just a self-contained classroom of students with, uh, special needs. For our 4-year-olds, we have 16 students receiving related services. We have nine in integrated program, and we have six in self-contained program. And what's interesting about this is that we have the same number of 3-year-olds in self-contained program as we do 4-year-olds, which is a little bit higher than we typically have. So that can impact our functional skills class, um, in a couple of years when those 3-year-olds become kindergartners. Next slide. So I went through all this information last year, uh, when we talked about, uh, Committee on Preschool, Special Education, and the responsibilities. Um, so I'm not going to go through everything, but, uh, while CPSC doesn't directly impact our budget, what it does impact is our time. Um, there's a lot involved with, um, the preschoolers. And for Deana and I, it's up probably about 60% of our time. Um, next slide. So this is a chart that looks at our learners, um, primarily in general education setting, uh, K through 12. Um, so in Abram Lansing, there are 39 students with four special ed teachers. Harmony Hill has 34 special ed students with four, um, special ed teachers. Excuse me. Vanskay has nine, uh, students receiving special ed services. And that may seem a little bit low, but notice that those nine students are spread in every grade from K to 5. So that makes it, uh, sometimes challenging for the special ed teachers, the two of them, to, uh, to provide those services. So there's a total of 82 elementary students receiving special ed services in the general class. Um, at the middle school, we have 65 students with seven special ed teachers. And at the high school, we have 87 with nine special ed, um, teachers. And then of those 87 students, 20 attend CTE half-day and class at the high school the other half of the day. Um, next slide. So these are students that are learning primarily in self-contained classrooms, uh, throughout the district. Um, we have self-contained classes at all of our elementary schools. So at Abram Lansing, we have a functional skills class with 10 students. Harmony Hill has two behavior development classes with a total of 16 students. And Vanskay has three functional skills classes with a total of 30 students. At the middle school, we have one functional skills class with 12 students. And the high school has one functional skills class with 11 students. So, uh, as you can see, the elementary schools have twice as many students in self-contained settings as grades 6 through 12. Uh, our goal at the elementary level is to keep our students with us in district for as long as we can. By sixth grade, um, some students who began in the smaller classes have grown into less restrictive learning environments with appropriate support. And some are in the special class in the middle or high school. And then some who, um, have more significant needs, um, might require specialized program than we can, we can provide them in district. Um, so these students, members of our community, may attend regional BOSIs or approved private schools according to their specific strengths and needs. Next slide.
And here those students are. Um, currently, well, as of Monday, 26 co-host students in grades 1 through 12 are educationally placed by the Committee on Special Education outside the district. Of 14 in either Questar or Capital Region BOSIs, and 12 in state-approved private special education schools. The schools listed here offer similar services and student support. Um, the BOSIs classes, though, are considered a less restrictive environment because BOSIs are a consortium of public schools. So while it looks the same when they're there, it's considered less restrictive because it's public and not private. Next slide, please. As you can see from this slide, the challenge that we have is that similar programs offered in BOSIs or private schools have significantly different individual and eventual net cost. I'm sorry, initial and eventual net cost due to tuition prices. By having enough knowledge of all these available programs, for example, a 612 behavior development class in BOSIs would cost $60,000 for the program, plus $1,600 for group counseling and individual counseling. $3,200 for $64,800 total. Whereas um, in a private school, the same program might cost 50 or $45,000. And the related services are included rather than à la carte as they are at BOSIs. So, um, the cost that we pay per year is significantly different. Um, the state has a form for how they repay us for our, um, special education placements out of district. Um, for high-cost publics, we have a $40,215 deductible, um, which in the case of our high-cost public here, would mean that $24,585 is payable um, at 0.723%. So our state reimbursement would be 17,775, and the net cost 42 to 25. And if you, if, hopefully you are comparing as we're going down and see that excess cost private school is, uh, ends up being significantly less expensive over time for the district. So that's our difficulty, um, comparing those and thinking, well, then we need to put them in the least restrictive environment, but look at the cost of the district. So, um, we try very hard to remain cognizant of what's going on in each program and be able to, to know the people there personally. Um, visit the program at least once a year to see how our students are doing and what the program looks like. So that we can really make an individualized decision about what's going to make the most sense and help our students make the most progress. Next slide, please. So, um, when parents choose to place their children in charter schools, um, this is, the co-hosted school district has to reimburse the charter school for special education costs as well as for tuition, which I know Stacy has talked a lot about charter school tuition before. In addition, slight costs play a role in that. So this year, we have four students currently in charter schools with IEPs, um, which is a $30,000 surcharge for special ed services. Now, parochial schools, the parents pay the, um, the tuition fee. But the District of Location, which is the school district in which the parochial school is located, um, charges the, charges the home district, which is us, for the special education services. So right now, we have six students in parochial schools getting special ed supports, which is $33,600. Finally, when all county places students, um, in foster care or in a residential school setting, the district is required to pay for their special ed support as well. So we have five students currently in foster with IEPs, and that is $215,000. So that's another big piece of our budget. And I add these at the end just to show you that, um, most of what our budget consists of is tuition. You know, sometimes three kids move away, and then we think, haha, maybe we could buy something that would really benefit our students here in the district. And then two or three other students may move in and puts an end to, to that dream, because we really are pretty consistent with our students moving in and out. So finally, last slide, please, Erin. Um, for the Special Programs Department, we have two initiatives for next year that, that we feel really strongly about. The first is that we resume our contract for the transition, transition partnership with the Arc of Runcler County. They sorry, they coordinate transition services for students with disabilities, IEPs and Section 504 plans, including job exploration and coaching, post-secondary education of all kinds, and linkages to state agencies that provide adult support. This would help us provide high-quality transition support mandated by our students' IEPs. And importantly, because we have so many asks about more teachers, more counselors, more social workers and psychologists, um, this would be an opportunity to give some of those job duties that we have taken from the Arc and put onto those teachers and other providers at the high school and get that back to the Arc. Um, our second initiative would be to have special education teacher leaders at the middle school and high school. The teacher leaders work with the building principals to, to really set the tone for the building, to make the schedules, to plan the professional development, to, to be kind of a, a cabinet of sorts for, for the principals. Um, right now, the four academic departments are represented, but the strategy department, which is special education, is not represented. And, um, a lot of decisions that are made at that level have a profound effect and really impact on the special education students. So we feel pretty strongly that adding a special ed teacher leader at those levels would really round them out and make them a more complete package in the teacher leader group. They also would be able to represent the special ed, the, the special programs department, um, perspective in those conversations, because that's something that neither Karen or I really are able to do on a weekly basis, you know, to meet with the individual buildings and talk about all of their specific plans. So anyone have any questions or comments for us?
One thing that caught my attention was, I believe Karen mentioned, I think it was that 60% of our time and Deana's time is for CPSC. Um, I just wanted to talk about that, because, you know, if that's anywhere near the ballpark, then that's like 30% of the whole time for all four of you that spent on this, you know, P L A decay. And so whether it's, is that what we would expect? Are there strategies, things we should be advocating, ways we can mitigate that time to give you guys some, to give you a day back, to spend down other important areas? Or is this, you know, time that's well-spent and we need to spend it there?
I think, I think it's pretty typical. Um, a lot of it is, is meeting with parents, um, explaining the process, because, you know, this is, this is new for them. And I like that because it's, it's our introduction to families that might be with us for many, many years. So I like devoting some time to starting that relationship and answering questions and working with the parent, you know, making sure they're comfortable with their provider, making sure they're, they know about all the different programs. So I think that's an important foundation to start with them. Um, a lot of it is clerical, and there's really, you know, stacking the services, um, having the meetings, uh, creating the IEPs and the prior written notices. I mean, and that, that just kind of is what it is. Um, so, I, I mean, I think the time that we spend is, is, is fair. And it, it just, I mean, it's, it's just a lot of, of clerical work and it's a lot of groundwork. Um, you know, uh, when students go to kindergarten, I go around, well, I'm doing it virtually this year, which is challenging, but I typically go around and visit them all to make sure that, um, you know, we have a good handle on what they'll need for kindergarten. So I feel like it's, it's all time, very well-spent.
And Matt, to add to that, I, I can tell you that when I started in the district as a school psychologist, which was 14 years ago, there may have been 22 CPSC students. And that was a good year. And now, um, so many people have a better understanding of, of early learning and helping kids get started on the right foot between parents and educators and, um, daycare providers that, um, we just have many more, many more students. I mean, maybe there are more students with, with these needs than there were in the past, but, but the caseload is significantly higher for us than, I mean, it grows every year.
So I kind of have a question going off of Matt's question. Um, so because we've had these programs established over a number of years now, one of the things that we had talked about in, in previous meetings for years is, uh, classification rates of, of kiddos with, who attended our behavior programs, 3-4-year-olds, uh, students. Are, are we seeing any kind of decrease in, um, classification rates or more increase in declassification when they get to a certain period? Um, I'm just curious to know, again, with Matt saying we spent a lot of time on this, is this, you know, you said it's, it's a good use of time, but are we seeing the results in that through our? You said it's a it's a good use of time, but are we seeing the results in that through our classification of students with disabilities?
That is a great question, and I don't think that we have the numbers on that right at hand, but I will certainly work with Karen and we will get that to you by the end of the week.
I have a time line. I just, I'm curious, you know, I don't know, like, what's your perspective? That's all, you know, or what you, what are you seeing? And then I guess my other perspective question, because I don't expect you to have a response to this, but. You talk a lot about student mobility and the intensity of our transfers that we have. I'm really curious at some point to know, like, how much, what was our mobility rate of students with IEPs? Do we have a significant number of kiddos moving in? Do you have IEPs who are already classified? Are we classifying them when they get here? You know, do we have the same amount who are leaving? So it'd just be interesting to know our mobility. And that, you know, what our, how our community demographic is building.
So I can I can address your first question with with getting a sense of, you know, the the students and can we can we declassify? So we typically, students who. Who are classified under CPSE for some speech issues, we often are able to declassify before they come to kindergarten. You know, I guess it just depends on the student. Often, students in integr-, not often, but sometimes students in an integrated class, we can declassify, which is great. You know, they get maybe two years of a preschool program, and then when they come to kindergarten, they don't need services. And and we've seen that they haven't needed services all the way through, and so that's great. We have students that just need extra support all along the way. So I think it varies, but we definitely do have students that have good, solid couple of years of extra services. And that's all they need to to be able to really catch up and just follow along with the generic curriculum.
And with regard to mobility, I feel like not always, but often. Families who have more difficulty and to move more frequently. We I mean, we have, we have families who are in special ed, who have students in special ed who have lived in Cohoes for generations. But when we have families who move in that may have been in two or three schools previously, they may either. Look like a student who needs special education. Or be a student who is already classified. And when we have those students that have moved around a lot and have not have the consist, had a consistent experience, those are the kiddos that we really. Try to work with and do some use a bunch of intervention and look at their response to that intervention and see, you know, is the problem here a lack of appropriate instruction and lack of consistency? Or is it really that they need, that they need to be permanently, you know, classified with some kind of a disability?
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Erin, can I ask a question about the transition services? Our, our current seniors will not have the benefits of those services, is that right?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well.
So are we, are we, we're currently not working with the Arc of Runciler County, correct?
That's correct.
So our our seniors will not have the benefit of those services, correct?
Well, the seniors this year have had the benefit of those services since they were in ninth grade.
But isn't isn't one of the most crucial pieces as they're transitioning out of completing high school and then what comes next?
It is. We have tried to fill in those pieces. We have Corey Prairie, who is our school psychologist at the high school, has forged a pretty good connection with our access VR person. For our region, and he's been making sure that kids have their access VR paperwork turned in. Oh, I'm sorry, Access VR is a state-funded agency that works at supporting students with disabilities. As they leave school and eventually go to work. Their goal is to eventually see people permanently employed and fully employed. So so they're able to offer services. Like job coaching, work readiness, job assessments, maybe to provide some work-based learning. They also help students who want to enter some kind of a post-secondary program to to learn a skill or learn a trade. They can offer financial support and also, you know, counseling tutors, all kinds of things related to completing high school and successfully transitioning to being a successfully employed adult.
So we see that we see that our grant will have to have that connection made with Access VR.
Yeah, so Corey is doing that, and then he's also doing paperwork for OPWDD for the students who need that type of adult support when they leave. So I mean, we're filling the basic gap, but we're, I mean, there is so much more that we can do. And this is a lot of bang for our buck, quite honestly. I know we don't have a lot of bucks either, though.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Karen.
Oh, you're welcome. It's always good to talk to you all.
So our next, I think, Mr. Hino, are you still with us?
I'm still here.
So this this should be brief, just a brief presentation on our high-risk fall to sports. Shared some information with you previously. Jeff, can you discuss your recommendations and then answer any questions?
Yeah, so recommendations for fall to are. You know, football and volleyball for the high-risk sports and then cross-country soccer. And football cheerleading are are the sports for fall to. My recommendations are varsity level and JV level. Modified is is a sport that's really not being played, a level that's not being played in in our league. Very few teams are are playing modified sports during this time. So that was the reason for the 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 upper levels to to get get started and not on a modified yet. And we hope to provide some type of training opportunities for our modified kids to kind of get them some some skill work and some conditioning and things like that. Once we get into the, you know, the warmer weather, nicer weather, I guess.
You you make it sound like it was easy.
Anyone have questions for for Jeff? And Jeff, I mean, it was so nice. We walked in, we saw you, we heard basketballs bouncing in the in the gym, so.
Saw kids outside waiting for a ride. It was incredible.
It's it's nice to start to see some activity go on go on here on campus.
It almost looks like the school again.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff, for everything you've done to get us to that noise, that joyful noise.
You're welcome.
And, you know, I do want to mention, Dr. De jersey has been amazing because she has run our plans, offered suggestions, and she's she's literally a text away. I mean, she responded so quickly to me today. I was like, wow, so I just want to, I want to thank her for all of her assistance, not just with the high-risk sports, but with everything we've been, we've been doing with this season. And then, so Jeff, that was easy. Bye.
Have a good night. Thank you.
And and this is, this will be very brief, too. Make sure to send you the whole plan tomorrow, as well as it's going to be posted on our our website. A new requirement was for us to have a communicable disease pandemic continuity of operations plan. And it is a plan for continuation of operations in the event that the governor declares a public health emergency. It's going to be posted on our website for thirty days, and it'll be on the March twenty-fourth agenda. And it contains items such as essential positions that be required on-site, backup personnel to maintain the continuity of operations. Disinfecting and cleaning protocols, PPE, what to do if there's a communicable disease exposure. And so look at the website, make comments if needed. We have shared it with our unions. We'll also be sharing it district-wide. Any questions? So. Matt? This is where I.
Yeah. Just on that last note, and also related to earlier with facilities and all the things. I know that the year, and you know, going back even to last year has been very challenging with all the new practices and all the new policies, everything that we're doing. How it's all very different, but I know that there was an article in the Times Union not that long ago about how, you know, the trends, we actually have some data now. And, you know, our teachers and staff, I think it was, Emily Lansing was saying that like, you know, four-point-six percent or something, and the average for the community is seven percent. So the things that we're doing are having a meaningful impact on transmission, and we've seen that here internally. And we've also seen that our our students are safe. And so it's, you know, as we look at the toll of hundreds of thousands of people that have been impacted locally across the United States. I think it's just a reminder that we're doing what we need to do, as difficult that is in this time. And it is, you know, having a positive impact, even though we're not seeing it, right? Like, we're seeing, you know, less transmission and people are healthier. But, you know, we're not seeing the opposite negative side of that as much as we could be. And so I would want to thank the facilities, the staff, the students, everyone, top to bottom, for, you know, their willingness and ability to just roll with the punches and make everything work this year. That's and and then last year, as I mentioned, so so thank you to everybody so deeply for all their hard work on that.
Matt, one thing I did forget to mention, so the high school did did conduct surveillance testing yesterday. Ended up being twenty-six students, about nine percent of the in-person population, and there were no, there were no positives. So that was. Just a a lot of work did go into making sure that protocols were implemented, and I want to thank Laura and her team for that. And that's good news. So sometimes I know that, Matt, the question was, are we going to do this, do this elsewhere? We wanted, we wanted to do it right after February break with the high school. We thought that would be a good time to do that. Our metrics continue to go down in the county and the and the community. So we are ready to test at the middle school, but at this point in time, we're going to hold off for then and just continue to to watch the metrics. But if something changes, we are ready. And actually, the the middle school nurse was at the high school as well to to learn. So thank you to all.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, we could have, you know, a lot more moments like we had at the start of this meeting, and we're not. And so I think I'm I'm very thankful for that. Far as any board discussion, any topic that we didn't cover in the, you know, fourteen presentations so far.
I would like to continue. The topic of the public being able to attend meetings. Not really sure, we need a committee. I think the first thing we need, are there DOH guidelines for ordinations? Is there something that we should have placed first from DOH to have a board meeting in person? I just don't want this to slip away. I feel there's a way we can do this. If we find a room with the right ventilation, maybe do sign-ups.
What I can do is prior to the next meeting, we can do some more research. I mean, it does kinds of things like, what are the, what are the social gathering limits, things like that? I have to, I have to do some some research, but I will. We'll be ready to report out if we must.
I mean, I was hoping maybe by April. Hopefully, maybe or maybe the first one in May, we could. Do that perhaps, if things stay, you know, the way they are, if numbers are down.
And we'd also have to look, so there's the DOH regulations, but then there's also, you know, open, open meetings. So know that, so how do, how do we match the two? How, how do we, you know, what would our limit be? And how do we ensure that everyone who wanted to could still, so probably still have to be some type of combination?
Yes.
So if those are definitely things, I can have that information to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I would definitely be a proponent of trying to open up to the public as much as we can. And I I do feel like the streaming is great in many respects. We, I mean, we've got more attendance than we've ever had, right? More participation than we could have a basketball, which is, I think, fantastic. So even even beyond that, you know, our ability to be able to stream these meetings to to folks at home, I think, is just a great option. And I would hate to see that go away. You know, some of the things that we talk about are, what are the good things that came out of this? And, you know, what are, what are the takeaways that that we might be able to use moving forward? And I think that's a key question.
I'm not a proponent of getting rid of this format. I just think there are people who would, I mean, appreciate the format. And some want to come and face-to-face express their concerns.
And then it becomes a balance between the size of the room and the streaming, so both are the types of things that enable you to have some conversations too.
Thank you.
I did want to, on tonight's agenda, well, the addendum to the, anyway, we have a number of folks who are volunteering for various coaching positions. And as, you know, with everything going on this year, this, I know everyone on the board and the district is super appreciative of those who are giving their time to let these activities move forward as best as we can. So thank you to those that are putting their time forward like that.
I think it's important to mention, too, that there's also an MOA tonight for unpaid co-curricular advisors. So thank you to the Post Teachers Association and for willingness to provide more opportunities for students. And after tonight's meeting, we're going to be, the rest of this week, looking at the opportunities that we can start to allow in a socially-distanced manner with protocols. And starting with those and continuing, continuing to add. And we'll be putting word out for, um, paying, you know, volunteers and so on.
So is that K-12 at all levels or?
No, K-12 at all levels. And we're going to be going off of the offerings that we we ran before. We have the, you know, we have the posting from previous years and looking through those to see which ones we can, we can start with. And how we can accommodate, we start the conversations with secondary principals, and then that's with the elementary principals and.
Because it could be quite possible to offer virtually some some books, right?
Virtually some in combination with some in person.
Yeah.
So that's.
Nice, yeah, I'm glad to see where.
Any other comments from board members before I move on to Paul a comment? Okay. We do have a question from Renee Wallenford, which was, if seventh and eighth graders will be able to try out for JV sports, and if so, what will the process be?
Jeff is still here.
I am still here. So advanced placement process for sports that are not high-risk, we will, you know, we we will look into offering those opportunities for those kids. There's, you know, a way to do it. We have either a varsity coach or athletic director recommendation for kids that we think can compete at that level. And then they then go through the process. So we we would, we would recommend, and I'll I'll meet with my coaches. I've already talked to the girls' soccer coach about some possible recommendations for students who can do the process of the APP. for students who can do the process of the A P P.
And so you said not high-risk, right? So that is which sports and which not sports could you?
Yes, so high-risk, we would not A P P for football and for volleyball. Football is pretty clear-cut. We're not going to put an eighth grader on a varsity football team. I mean, it just physically is not, you know, not a good thing or safe thing to do. So, and we would not do it for volleyball just because of the nature of the high-risk sport.
Thank you, Jeff.
Welcome.
That, in the case, I'll ask for a motion from the board for tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annelie?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Any questions or comments, anything at all? Okay, that is, was the only public comment we had received. And so upcoming, we have our next meeting on March 10th and 24th. And at this point, they're all planned to be livestreamed, as we talked about. We'll, even if we do start in person, we'll hope to continue that practice as long as we can. But the next time you'll see us is March 10th, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:55.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annelie?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Good night.